Very good. Okay, thank you, Rob. We'll bring the meeting back to order, or to order rather, of our committee, the whole agenda. Is there any declaration related to this agenda? Not seeing any business arising for minutes. Delegations, we have two delegations this morning, and Savannah is going to introduce our first delegation. Savannah.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, County Council. Very proud to have Camilo with us today. He's on the screen virtually, coming to us from out west, actually. And he has been the project lead on our Beaver Valley Sustainable Tourism Strategy over the last eight months. He is the Vice President of Bannakin, so we have been in excellent hands with him. And he's going to talk about the process that we've taken over the last eight months. The very integrated consultation process that has happened and the work towards the strategic plan development. So I will hand it right over to you, Camilo, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Savannah, and good morning, councilors. Just confirming that everyone can see the presentation I'm sharing. Perfect. Hello, and thank you, first of all, for the opportunity to present the results of the Beaver Valley Sustainable Tourism Strategy Research and Development Project. This project began in January of this year and is in the process of concluding, largely in part through presentations to yourselves, Gray County Council, then the Council at the Municipality of Great Highlands, followed by a presentation to Council at the Town of the Blue Mountains. To start off with some introductions, we are Bannakin, as Savannah mentioned. Thank you for that introduction, Savannah. Bannakin is a Canadian-based professional services company working within and beyond tourism. We specialize in research strategy and development, as well as strategic communications. As part of our strategy and development work, we design and conduct research and analysis to inform tourism development, and we co-development, we co-develop tourism strategies and plans with destination stakeholders. For the work on the Beaver Valley Sustainable Tourism Strategy, we assembled a team of four staff and one subcontractor to work with the leads from the County of Gray, Regional Tourism Organization Seven, the Municipality of Great Highlands, and the Town of the Blue Mountains. Some quick introductions, as Savannah mentioned, my name is Camilo Montoya-Guevara. I'm Vice President at Bannakin, and I project manage the development of the Beaver Valley Sustainable Tourism Strategy. We also had James Artiaga and Annie Bird, who led the research and analysis across the project. We worked closely with Brian Plumstead, who was our local lead and an integral member of our team. And Trevor Jonas Benson provided strategic support across the project's engagement, analysis, and strategy development activities. Through our work, we take a community-based and participatory research and capacity-building approach. Such, our team at Bannakin led the research engagement and development process for the Beaver Valley Sustainable Tourism Strategy. Based on our approach and as well the collaboration taken by the project partners, they were directly involved in the review of research, identification of strategies, and drafting of the report and strategy components that will guide their respective and collaborative work over the next five years. The involvement of the project partners from the municipalities and RTO seven was key to ensure the development of an actionable and implementable strategy and action plan. Something else to note is that the project boundaries and study area were identified to include the south-to-north travel corridor that runs along Gray Road thirteen and the Beaver River, as well as a larger area to correspond to the municipal boundaries of the Municipality of Great Highlands and the Town of the Blue Mountains. That also includes a variety of assets and scenic locations that are largely connected and understood to be part of Beaver Valley by the community. From the beginning of the project, we set ourselves a goal to co-develop a sustainable tourism strategy that is grounded on a long-term vision for the area and is accompanied by an actionable plan to guide the work over the next five years. Related to this goal, we identified five key objectives for the development of the strategy and action plan. The first objective being to understand the background and context surrounding tourism in Beaver Valley, to gather insight, input, and feedback from a breadth and diversity of stakeholders. The third being to identify strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and challenges for tourism in Beaver Valley. The fourth being to create, to co-create a tourism strategy that aligns with Beaver Valley corridor vision and confirm what actions to take in the next few years. And the last objective being to establish a clear understanding of the roles, responsibilities, and resources required for implementing the actions identified. Toward achieving these objectives, we conducted, we followed a methodology that was designed to this, to respond to the needs outlined in the original request for proposals, and that also corresponded to the local context of the project. So the primary and secondary research conducted, as well as our key outcomes include, so reviewing over fifty documents for background and context, conducting two, two-day in-person field research trips, one in the winter, one in the summer, to get a better understanding of the on-the-ground realities for tourism in Beaver Valley. We also conducted a tourism community survey with responses from a hundred and eighty residents, thirty visitor-facing businesses, twenty tourism organizations, and twenty-five other either community-based or interest groups. We conducted eighteen telephone and virtual interviews with key informants. We hosted two in-person and one virtual, so a total of three table talks with sixteen industry members who attended. We reviewed eighteen visitor-facing organizational websites as part of a tourism asset scan and demand generator review. We also conducted good practice and trends research by rees, by looking into three comparator destinations. We hosted a future exploration session with eighteen attendees representing a variety of destination stakeholders that included government bodies, community development organizations, and community groups. And last but not least, we also hosted a virtual tourism partners focus group where eleven existing and potential organizational partners for tourism attended and provided feedback. Beyond the methods that I've just outlined, we also identified a strong opportunity and need to communicate clearly and consistently with destination stakeholders to make sure that we were gathering a range of perspectives, while also supporting alignments between sustainable development strategy and other initiatives that are taking shape in Beaver Valley. The organizational tourism landscape in Beaver Valley, I should note, is a, is a complex one, as we learnt. Our team identified at least twenty-three different groups and organizations, ranging from landowners and local governments, civic agencies and ministries, volunteer and grassroots organizations, and community-based initiatives that are either directly or indirectly involved and interested in tourism. The integrated analysis of the primary and secondary research was presented to the project partners through a landscape assessment report in July. This landscape assessment report included an analysis of the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and challenges, as well as key considerations that inform the now-developed Sustainable Tourism Strategy. An important and initial output from the strategy development process was the following long-term vision for tourism in Beaver Valley. It was important to communicate and balance the economic, social, cultural, and environmental context required for sustainable tourism as part of the future tourism vision. The vision reads as follows: By 2030, the Beaver Valley provides a world-class experience for visitors and locals alike, all of whom value the spectacular geography of the region and respect the need to create a long-term legacy of economic and social vibrancy and environmental sus- sustainability. I should note that this vision is informed by the inputs gathered across the process. So whether it was through the community survey conducted, the different table talks when talking about how people see the future of Beaver Valley, all those inputs informed the vision that you see here. And the other thing I'd like to note is that this long-term vision is an inspirational and aspirational statement, guiding the path for the areas of opportunity, strategies, and actions identified. In nature, this vision statement may never be achieved as is, but rather it acts as a north star for the management, investment, and development of tourism in Beaver Valley. As part of strategy development, and importantly, with the inputs shared by partners during the partners' focus group, the project team identified and finalized two areas of opportunity to guide the work of the project partners moving forward. I first want to note that the Beaver Valley is an emerging destination, and as such, the strategy is foundational to pursuing dedicated tourism development and management. And second, the areas of opportunity and resulting strategy is intended to guide the work of the project partners as they also work to bring other partners into the process. The opportunities and actions in this strategy are undertakings that the project partners from Gray County, the Municipality of Great Highlands, the Town of the Blue Mountains, and RTO seven can commit to and work toward deliver, delivering meaningful outcomes. Each area includes a goal that articulates where to take their efforts to develop and plan tourism sustainably. The first area of opportunity is stakeholder alignment and collaboration, the one you see on the left, with the main goal for this area being destination stakeholders are working efficiently and effectively together to shape and deliver tourism sustainably. The supporting objectives I will get into in the next slide. The second area of opportunity is tourism development, the one on the right, with the goal being tourism assets and infrastructure are being responsibly and successfully used to attract visitors to the Beaver Valley. To provide now a bit more detail and context as to these areas, within the first area of opportunity being stakeholder alignment and collaboration, we identified two objectives and four corresponding strategies. These objectives and strategies and their actions respond to the broader need to foster more connection, shared understanding and appreciation for tourism, streamline communications, and contribute to a supportive tourism landscape. As you see, based on the chart, each strategy has specific actions identified, which indicate how the strategy will be brought to life with an anticipated implementation timeline. I won't get into all of them, but just to provide a brief overview, the first objective being to grow and unite destination stakeholders into a tourism community is made up of three, three strategies. The first being to standardize and streamline communications between destination stakeholders. One way to do this is the project partners creating a communication plan and activating a pri- primary regional tourism communication hub or webpage. The second strategy being cultivate a shared sense of identity. And the third, work with regional tourism organizations to align tourism efforts and ensure a positive visitor experience. The second objective within this area of opportunity is to align efforts to improve Beaver Valley as a destination. The first strategy within this objective being support community and industry-led initiatives that benefit the visitor and their experience. As an example of the actions that will be taken here is to develop, share, and monitor consistent visitor information and messaging across all regional tourism platforms. This I would like to highlight is an action that came out from the finding of the tourism asset scan where messages about Beaver Valley, the brand for Beaver Valley, something that needs to be shaped and made more consistent across different ways of communicating with potential visitors. The second strategy within this objective is to monitor and evaluate tourism initiatives. One of the actions to be implemented is to create a tourism development tracker and outcome-based evaluation framework that will, in many ways, also support consistent communication and support building, understanding, and appreciation for tourism across industry and residents. The second area of opportunity is tourism development. Two objectives and three, and corresponding strategies were identified. This area responds to the broader needs to facilitate and support a growing tourism industry that leverages and grows tourism assets and activates them so that they contribute to the economic and social vibrancy of Beaver Valley, as well as the needed environmental sustainability. The first objective within the tourism development area of opportunity is to leverage and grow demand generators, with the first strategy being support tourism businesses in the Beaver Valley through industry data collection, knowledge sharing, and facilitating connections. One way to do this is to establish a comprehensive tourism asset and inventory and use it to identify tourism clusters for facilitating partnerships and enhance experience development moving forward. The second strategy to support this objective is to support the development of new tourism assets, products, and experiences that play to the region's unique strengths and bring significant benefit. One of the actions that I'll highlight here is to research and develop a tourism investment attraction strategy that also aligns with some of the ongoing work on the economic development and tourism master plan for the county, as well as the investment attraction strategy for the county. The second objective within this area is to lay the groundwork for tourism investments that will bring long-term benefits. The main strategy here is to assess infrastructure and carrying capacity requirements to support the visitor economy. This here is important so that tourism moves forward with a broader and fuller understanding of what the current tourism context is, as well as possibilities and opportunities for growth. One way to do this is to conduct biannual tourism traffic and impact assessment to guide decision related to carrying capacities. So again, moving towards a more ongoing understanding and communication of the state of tourism in Beaver Valley. To wrap up this presentation, and now that the strategy development process has concluded, I'll just share some of the perspective from our team, because the reality is that although the, the strategy development process has concluded, the real work now begins, as outlined in the strategy. It's our perspective that the municipal partners from Gray County, Municipality of Great Highlands, and the Town of the Blue Mountains will need to communicate and demonstrate their commitment to continue their collaboration for implementation, including formalizing their partnership along with regional organization, Regional Tourism Organization Seven, and confirming the need for human and financial resources available for implementation. Additionally, although important engagement has already taken place throughout the development of the strategy and interests in collaboration have been gathered, sustainable tourism in Beaver Valley will continue to require continued communication and collaboration across the tourism landscape. This includes direct and mutual engagement between the project partners and other tourism organizations, as well as emerging tourism initiatives, such as the Beaver Valley Destination Stewardship Council and the aspiring UNESCO Georgian Bay GeoPark. I'll note that the strategy document report is accompanied by an internal implementation plan that was co-developed with the project partners to guide their work across the implementation process. With that, I just want to say thank you again for your time today and the opportunity to present the results of the Beaver Valley Sustainable Tourism Strategy. It has been a real pleasure for our team to collaborate with the project partners and get to know the, the residents, the businesses, the destination stakeholders in Beaver Valley, and we're excited for what the, the, the next years have in store for sustainable tourism in Beaver Valley. With that, happy to take any questions or comments.
Thank you, Camille. Are there any questions for Camille or Savannah even? Counselor Mattressoff, please.
Thank you. Through, through you, the warden, I don't know if Mr. Montoya-Guevara is going to be present when we have the further discussion about the report as well, or is, should I ask my question to him now?
I'm, I'm just wondering if council, because Savannah does have a report related to this. We could do that immediately after our delegations, or we could wait till, you know, it's scheduled in the agenda. What, whatever the council would like, Councilor Queen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I know we did it last council meeting. I think we have people here that are interested in it. I think it would make sense to do it after the delegation, and then if they get, get on with their day as well, so.
Yep. Oh, that's a good point. So Counselor Mattressoff, what would be your preference?
I thank you through you, the warden, and then I'll just ask a general question at this point, and then save my specific questions for when the report comes forward early. Thank you. So my question through you to our presenter this morning is the reference to the stakeholder alignment, stakeholder alignment, destination stakeholders. May I just ask, what has been the intentional cross-communication to the stakeholders in the agricultural community as well as residents as well? So I'm, I'm reading, I'm reading the death, the definition of destination stakeholders. That includes people that have a direct interest. I also see in the report, which I'll get to later, the references that are there. So could you just please walk me through how you were able to join those both stakeholder groups together? Both those within, directly within tourism and those who are impacted by it, because it is a shared Beaver Valley. Thank you.
Camille.
Perfect. Yes, thank you for the question, counselor. In terms of how we were able to create alignment and bring different groups together into the process of engagement, definitely want to highlight the community tourism survey that was disseminated and was open to residents, business owners and operators, as well as tourism organizations and other organizations or community groups. Within this survey, perspectives from anyone working, whether directly in tourism or other industries related to tourism were gathered. We also hosted the three different table talks, two in-person, one virtual, which included some agri-tourism owner and operators. So individuals who are working within the agricultural and tourism space, facilitating opportunities or experiences for visitors to partake on on-farm dinners, for example. So that was an opportunity to have more direct conversations with those that are both nested within the agricultural space and either already established in tourism or exploring opportunities for tourism. Those are the two main research activities I can highlight, where we would have gathered that broader perspective that informed the strategy you see before you. Thank you for the question.
Okay, any other general questions? And I think we'll just go straight to Savannah's report. If she, Counselor Greg, would you like to ask a question?
Thanks, Warden Mill. And I do just have one question, though, as to the guests here this morning. I think back to the eighties, nineties, when the Beaver Valley had Talisman Ski Club and, and really in the area. It was known as, you know, you're either skiing at Blue Mountain or skiing at Talisman. And you had some of these ancillary private clubs like Toronto or Georgian Peaks, whatever. Talisman's closed. The emerging destination is a world-class destination is a big statement. So I'm just wondering, what type of historical context might you have applied to the general area when you're developing a strategy in terms of trends and changes in, in behaviors or attitudes? Certainly hiking is wonderful over there. Don't ever change in Gray Highlands, cycling roadside road seven, the A and B, I don't know what ones on each side of the valley, but there, it's a terrific area for cycling. So I'm just wondering, i- in terms of historical context, what kind of a lens did you apply on developing that in the strategy?
Camille.
Thank you for the question. In terms of historical lens, as I mentioned, we conducted a very thorough background context document review and summary. As part of this, we consulted both different plans, strategies that have been developed at the county and at the municipal levels, as well as information on the Beaver Valley as a place to live, as a place to visit, including some of the activities you've highlighted and the, the, the history of changing businesses in Beaver Valley. The activity I do want to highlight that I think really connects us more to the history and context of tourism in Beaver Valley is the key informant interviews. We conducted eighteen different conversations with individuals who are working within, living in, and knowledgeable about the Beaver Valley. This gave us an opportunity to approach that historical context that, that you're asking about from also the experience of individuals who have direct experience, living in, building up the Beaver Valley to what it is today. I hope that provides more context and answers the question.
Okay, thank you, Camille. Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just to build on part of Talisman, there is a Beaver Valley Ski Club that is there currently and is running, and also one of the things I hear is accommodations. Was there any discussion around that part? Because some people come to a certain area. They might want to stay more than just a day. They want to stay for longer or however, but I know at Beaver Valley Ski Club, I know that is something that accommodations is something that is an issue in the sense of, I guess, air bees or whatever, but I just wondered if that part was touched upon.
Camille.
Perfect. Yes, thank you for the question. Accommodations were certainly a consideration and part of the discussion across both the, the research and strategy development. When I say the research, it was something that we heard directly from the engagements we conducted, as well as felt ourselves, the, the need for accommodation and different types of accommodation across the Beaver Valley. As I mentioned, we were in destination twice, once in the winter, once in the summer, and finding accommodation, although there is some, can also be tricky depending on season of the year and, and, and hours of operation. In terms of how it's reflected in the strategy, we have it in the, the, I would highlight the tourism development opportunity being the area of work that outlines the needed research and investment into more, the different types of tourism businesses and, and experiences, accommodations included. Within this, we have the action to research and development at tourism investment attraction strategy, because we know that there are certain types of businesses that operate within tourism, accommodations being one of them, that could be attracted to invest in the, in the area and build up that tourism landscape and makeup of businesses. Thank you for the question. I hope that answers and provides more context.
Good. Counselor McQueen.
Well, thank you for that. And just maybe to build, I know with, as Counselor Greg had mentioned, that the Talisman lands were, were very instrumental for a lot of years for the shared experiences and people learning how to ski and, and accommodations. And a lot of it, I think, around the eighty room or eighty-two room, there was a lot of opportunities for small conferences that, and weddings. I know of a number of people that had weddings that are sharing their fiftieth anniversary that had, you know, there and stuff like that. And also the employment of that area as well, which was a big loss when that resort did close down. So, I mean, opportunities for employment for local people is always something that is a necessity or not a necessity, but something that is, you know, community enhancement in the sense of creating those opportunities. I don't think I have any more to expand on that, but it's sort of something that there is. I know through the Niagara Scarpment Plan, there was recreational development designation along there. And, and we all know that the Bruce Trail, we get, especially in Gray Highlands, we get double the trail because it goes, because the valley is in a sort of a horseshoe, it goes around one area and comes around the other, which a lot of, a number of people across the province and across the world probably enjoy much in the sense of that trail system, and it's been in place since the late sixties. So there's a lot of, a lot of things happening, but again, it goes back to accommodations and people enjoying their time and spending, and parking. Another issue is parking and, and where those people park and, and share that, that space. I know that the Gray County, on Gray Road thirteen, has that lookout that is very much enjoyed different parts of the year, especially when the leaves are turning, you go down there and some parts early part of October, and it's quite, quite busy. And that, so there's a lot of things that are happening with the Beaver Valley and has traditionally happened and certainly need to continue to look at the future of that whole area for sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McQueen. All right, we're going to try to accommodate everybody here, and apparently the, the next delegation is eager to go. And so Jason Hemstock from the Own Sound Chamber of Commerce is here. We'll come back to Savannah's report after Jason gives his delegation. So welcome, Jason. The floor is yours, sir.
Okay, thank you for that introduction and for your time this morning, everyone. My message this morning is quite a clear one. Basic needs for transportation within this region for affordable, reliable transportation are not being met on a daily basis. It's a concern that we've shared with many invested partners through many conversations within this community, and the current state for transportation is dire. I'd like to acknowledge that, that the current funded and managed transportation system through the county, as it is a vital one offered here, and it is something that we anticipate will grow as a need. And understanding that the funding for that system is not a permanent one, I would like to encourage that, as it's such an important piece for our community, that we look at a permanent structure in place and continued funding to continue to offer the service permanently and hopefully improve that service moving forward. Additionally, I would like to encourage the support staff for working with partners in the community for identifying gaps and filling those needs, as their work is also important. um as their work is also important. Again, a simple message that transportation is a very important piece in our community that needs attention and any support um that we can get from the county would be very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Uh, are there any questions for uh Jason? Councilor Nielsen.
Thank you very much, Warden. Um, Jason, you're, so just so I'm clear, you're the president of the Chamber, Owensong Chamber of Commerce. You're talking about transportation from your membership. Is the transportation focus the need to bring um workers from outside of the city in to the city for um work and and for labor force? Or are you more uh is a bigger challenge the internal uh transportation network within the city of Owensong itself?
I would give both of them equal attention. As I say, a- a- across the board, this is a, this is a dire need within the community, within the community, um where I say basic needs, I mean, getting groceries is is a challenge. Um, getting across town is a challenge. People are are being stranded within our city on a daily basis and to get transportation outside of the city, which I know is a service that you support. Where ridership is now, we only anticipate that need will grow. But um yeah, this is, this is people getting to work within our community. This is people getting uh assistance or just to destinations outside of the city that are required, not necessarily desired.
Anyone else? Okay, not seeing any others. I will thank you, Jason, for your time. Appreciate your message and uh enjoy the rest of your day. So that brings us, we'll do uh Savannah's report now. And I I neglected to thank Camilla, so I hope he's gonna come back and join us for, oh, there he is. Good. Thanks, Camilla, for hanging around, so. Little bit of a discussion going on. I'm I'm advocating for Savannah. So I'm I'm thinking I won. So Savannah, come on up, welcome this morning. Uh, I need a mover and a secondary for this report, Councilor Carlin and Councilor Pringle. Savannah, welcome.
Thank you very much, Warden. Like I said, I'm really proud to be in front of you today with this strategy. And we have Camilo here. We also have Michelle from Gray Highlands, who's been a key partner in this. Tim was unable to attend, but he is cheering in spirit uh as well as Alex. And then we also have the destination stewardship, uh a couple of representatives from that group as well who are here today. So I think it's really important to acknowledge that because this is the first time that we have taken a full corridor approach and a full partnership approach to looking at a challenge and an opportunity together across a huge geography. Uh, and it didn't make sense to do that independently. So that is why eight months ago, we decided it was time to all come together and look at this collectively to figure out what it was we were going to be able to do. So the project partners came together and we started with the development of a long-term vision and a three-year strategy and quickly realized over the last eight months, given just how complex this project has been, that we needed more than three years to begin implementation and to begin that journey. So we expanded that to a five-year timeframe to be able to give us the runway that we need to make sure that everybody is involved. Because the one thing that we have come back to time and time again through this strategy is that every single stakeholder, every single party needs to be able to see themselves in this strategy. This is not something, it it, I should say, is very similar to the master plan that we just brought forward last council, where this talks about the role that we can play. We are not trying to provide roles to others. We are not trying to say we're going to accomplish things that we really truly have no control or say over. This is an area where we know that we've got a sphere of control and that's where the focus really is in this report. Visitation, we know in Gray County and in Beaver Valley specifically, has been growing tremendously year for years. Um, COVID threw that into high speed, though, and it really became apparent just how much work needed to be done for tourism infrastructure and development around to be able to welcome the tourists that we have, but also make sure that the residents still have a good experience because there's a lot of conflict between visitors and residents when things are not well planned. And that's kind of the state that we're in right now. We don't have the infrastructure that we need. We don't have good plans in place to be able to make sure that we're helping both sides um of our residents and the visitors who are coming. And we also know that good tourism takes a really long time, good tourism development. It does not happen overnight. And you heard Camilo uh mentioned, there are more than twenty-three partners specifically working in tourism and Beaver Beaver Valley. That is a lot of voices, that is a lot of vested interests, and it's all over the map. So we have a lot of partners who are very, very active. We have others who we really had to draw out of the woodwork to be able to come to the table, but it was really important that we heard from all of them. And that is a role that we as municipalities and as RTO seven and the county are able to play. We find that balance. And that, I think, is what we're so proud of with the strategy we've got before you today. It took a long time to get here. But we have that balance where we're working with the stakeholders in the community, but we're also looking at the development potential and the development opportunities. And when we say that, we mean that also in a very balanced way because we know that we need good development, we need well-planned development, but only where it's allowed, where it's meant to be. So Talisman that you just spoke about is a great example. It once was a real economic driver in Gray Highlands. It has been sold and it has the potential to be able to do that again. But there are only a handful of properly zoned places throughout this entire region that would be able to do that. And that's where we want to be able to look at. We don't want to talk about rezoning or other potential elsewhere because we know that that land as nature, as corridors, as protected, is very, very important. We need to be able to have both. So right now, the experience that you're seeing, people are coming and because we don't have the the infrastructure or the demand generators or the places for them to land, especially in the accommodation side, everyone just goes everywhere. And that's not a sustainable thing. We know that. Making your own paths and choosing your own trails and deciding where you want to explore in the Beaver Valley is not something that we want to be able to encourage. And that's something that also came loud and clear through all of the stakeholder consultations over the last eight months. This is really important because tourism is one of our core sectors. You heard that at the last council meeting when we were talking about Gray County's core sectors. And it is, the numbers are staggering. We've got approximately ten thousand employees in Gray County are directly impacted by tourism. We have approximately forty-three thousand employees in Gray, so one quarter of all of our employees are tied to tourism. That is significant. There are more than fifty-four hundred businesses directly involved in tourism. We have nearly three million visitors every year coming to Gray County and they're spending more than two hundred and twenty-two million dollars. So there is a real impact here. So thinking of the importance of balance, you said that the development of the strategy has been incredibly complex because there are so many stakeholders involved and new groups are coming to the table every single day. And we really truly believe that everybody has a role to play in this. While we have this engagement, it's also highly varied, as I mentioned. So some are very active and others is really difficult to get to the table, but we really need to continue to work to get everybody there together. And as public servants and as your municipal and county staff, we are there to find that balance and make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of those stakeholders and all of those parties involved because everyone needs to be able to see themselves. And that's something that we really feel strongly about and why we are so very vested in the strategy that we have before you. So given the emergence and what you see, I'm not going to go over all of the details because Camila just gave you an excellent overview of the two different areas that we've had, but that is also on purpose to have two very specific sides of the strategy, again, trying to find that balance so that we're looking at that perfect middle between proper development, well-planned development and stakeholder alignment and collaboration. So we would like to be able to focus on what it is that municipalities can achieve and work with our community stakeholders to allow them to focus on what they're able to achieve so that together we are working towards that world-class destination. The Beaver Valley has the potential to be. And we know that in order to get there, there needs to be that opportunity for people to land and to enjoy and to experience, but the beautiful views and the nature that forms and functions as well. So both of those things go hand in hand. And as Camila also said, this is just the beginning. So we have been engaged in tremendous stakeholder uh consultation over the last eight months. And we have no anticipation of seeing that slower stop. We know that that will be a continual effort as we go forward. But what we would like and what we're asking you today is to endorse the strategy as we presented it to you and to allow the two municipalities, the county and RTO seven, to enter into a memorandum of understanding to really figure out what it is our role is going to be and how we go about it so that we are all committed as we carry on forward. And this, that's a really good example for other corridor development that we can look at down the line as well, as we start to flesh out those opportunities through this group. We're not asking for any dollars at this point. The lion's share of the strategy is staff time so that we would work into work plans that we already have because we know that it is going to be the people at the table having the conversations that is going to get this work done. When there are financial contributions and we know eventually there will be, we'll work those into budget consultations and budget conversations with you for your consideration annually. But at this time, we're not asking for any dollars to be able to do this. We're asking for the staff time to be able to enter in and start the work um so that we can have a beautiful Beaver Valley that we all can enjoy and we can protect and we can share. So I will leave it there, but if you have any questions, you have several of us here to be able to answer.
Thank you, Savannah. And I uh I welcome Councilor Brean, who just joined the meeting. So uh pretty, I would say, very ambitious strategy. The last line of the executive summary, there's a lot in there to encompass. Any questions? Councilor Matt yourself.
Thank you through you, the chair. Um, I and I do thank uh Camilo for sharing the the kinds of input opportunities, the community survey, survey and the table talks. Uh, so thank you. I'm going to reference that. I did hear Ms. Myers, your uh the the vision is to see themselves in the strategy. So this would be the the destination stakeholders as well as the local stakeholders as well. So get in that spirit, uh my, I I very much appreciate, having read through it more than once, very much appreciate the the reference to balance and and the reference because we want, if it's going to be a positive visitor experience, it means it has to equally be a positive local resident farmer experience as well, those of us who are living and working in the area. People are drawn to this area, not just because of the beauty of the Niagara Scarpment and hiking and all of those natural activities, but they're also drawn to the area because the farms are beautiful to see and to participate in the agritourism is is a great feature. But not all agricultural practices in the Beaver Valley are tied specifically to agritourism. So we've got two two pools of agricultural. And so I did do a careful search through this document, looking for reference so that they so that permanent residents could feel that they can see themselves in this um in this document and um agricultural, there were, there were no hits for agricultural. Three hits for agricultural, the adjective, thank you. Two of them were Gray County's official plant. So thank you for for bringing that front and center because that's an important feature that we have. And agritourism, again, four hits and and there's a, there's an obvious connection to those ones. So my question is, is in the agricultural landscape, which is the bottom, one of the end sections of the document, it says that this is a list and summary of the organizations whose activity direct to tourism or not has an impact on the future thinking of tourism in the Beaver Valley. So given that we're sharing the same roads, given that we're we're sharing the same areas, I would like to know um if we can bring front and center within that organizational landscape, the agricultural organizations, the bay growers, for example, they were us very popular destination for our open fields day. People really wanted to know more about them. I'd like to see them in here. I'd like to see them named. Our agricultural fairs as well, the Beaver Valley Agricultural Society, I sit on it, we haven't it's not there, it's not in the document. My fear is that if we bring this out to the members of public, people will see the absence in the listing. And I'm just wondering what we can do to highlight the interaction that's already gone on and how we can work that into this next five-year plan. That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you through you, Mr. Warden. That is an excellent point and we most definitely did engage with agriculture. And we also uh relied on staff from Gray County who focused on agriculture to be able to bring that perspective. But we can make it clearer in here uh that that is definitely an important group. Uh, and then I also think, given the work that we're doing with the agricultural advisory committee that we have here, this is another great opportunity to be able to bring our work plans forward and talk to them about what is happening and and where we see the strategy going so that they do see themselves, so that we can fix that.
Thank you, Savannah. Thank you for the question. Councilor Keveney.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, Savannah, a question for you, if I may. I think this um corridor approach is really interesting and exciting and innovative and I congratulate you for it. As you move forward with the implementation of the uh Beaver Valley Tourism Strategy, it will have an impact on neighboring communities. I'm thinking Mekka, of course, in particular. And I'm just wondering if there's been any consideration given to the greater economic development a strategy for Gray County as to how those impacts might be addressed because you will be attracting more tourists through your promotion of the Beaver Valley. And certainly those folks uh will find their way into the rest of the lower tiers. If the statistics still holds true, I believe people generally stay three or four nights at Blue Mountain and then they're looking to expand their experience in the area. And of course, they will be drawn into uh our other communities. So I just uh wondered if you could speak a little bit to that, Savannah. Thank you.
Thank you for that question, Councilor Keveney, and through you, Mr. Warden. It absolutely fits with the Economic Development, Tourism, Culture Master Plan under Destination Development. That is a key component of it, but also under the investment readiness piece, given the tourism development potential here. So there are two areas in the plan uh that this directly connects to. And you're right, part of that is trying to extend those stays and to keep people here. So even though uh you'll notice on the committee report, we've said that this impacts all of our member municipalities, but particularly the Gray Highlands and the Blue Mountains. And that's because we know our tourists travel around and what is good in one municipality is supporting the other. So any economic drivers that we can keep here is going to support the region and will impact all of the region. And we'd like people to be able to stay longer. So right now, we have the mountain resort. We have some Airbnb's, we have some small motels, but we have a lot of room to improve on the accommodation side. Everything from Airbnb's to motels to resort-style potential to be able to keep people here longer. So they don't just drive through, we want them to leave their dollars here uh more and more so that we can continue to create that economic boost. And we know that things like Talisman, for example, that is an anchor and it is already driving other investment opportunities. So I'm not sure if anyone follows the June motel, but that is a group that we're very excited to be welcoming to the Beaver Valley and they have just taken over and are starting their new webisodes of the makeover that they are making on their new motel. So it's very exciting to be able to see the interest starting to grow and investments starting to come back into the area because of those anchor opportunities.
Thank you, Savannah. Councilor McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And just to, um, I thank you for the report, uh Savannah. And uh just going back to uh regards to agriculture, I know that uh the author of the Niagara Scarpment Plan when it was created, Ken Whitford, it always said twelve years I was on the NEC when he retired, said Beaver Valley was a patchwork made of patchwork of all the fields that were part of that agricultural site and that was sort of the uniqueness of the Beaver Valley. But agriculture has changed and uh sometimes logically farming isn't been as productive as lot farming and a lot of those farms have thrown back into trees. And it just, he always, he always made that comment that part of the Beaver Valley is losing that uniqueness of the patchwork of all the fields that were dominant at a certain time, but as time went on, you can still sort of see some of the head rows and stuff, but it's it's changing and will continue to change. But uh it was just a comment that he had made uh over different times and uh and those that know Ken Whitford, Ken Whitford, he's since retired off the NEC, but he was a big part of the author of the Niagara Scarpment Plan. But the agricultural side is is always changing and uh it's unique in itself. And agriculture in a sense of uh is 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 getting bigger, bigger equipment, bigger everything to a certain degree. There is the other side of smaller farms and that, so it's, it's, you know, it's continuing to change. The irritant that I hear and it was one, one of the last development permits that was in clear view with regards to was a lavender farm and the parking and the visitors and the irritation that had with the agricultural side on 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 that sense and equipment stuff. So we do have to work through that issue and the issue of crops and canola fields where people attend. And it's a picture taken and it's, you know, it's a business. Attend and it's a picture taken and it's, you know, it's a business growing of agriculture is is a business, so it's controlling that and and. The respectfulness of of that and that, so I know there's a, you know, this is not just unique for the Beaver Valley area. But when you have an area where you do have high attraction of tourism and agriculture, you can get, you could get those conflicts, I know a fellow. Don Ready, who is a resident of the mountains, maybe one individual that, you know, you could follow up on in heaven. Who has been a resident farmer in that area for quite a long time and maybe he's, he has been engaged in this process, but. I think we have to make sure that as a stakeholder and many other stakeholders are there that. On the agricultural side, which is always changing, is predominantly still on an area and and apple growers, there's crop growers, there's livestock, you know. You know, that type of thing, so you always still have to try to find that balance that works because. Certain times of year, equipment is on the road and stuff like that and 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 we have. Witnessed other areas of the problems where certain types of crops, people like to get their selfie. And how you, it's hard to control that, but it's respectful too, right? I'll leave it at that, maybe I'm just bringing a bit of an agricultural slant to that part of it, but I think it is something that is one of our industries in our community.
Thank you, Councilor Nielsen.
Thank you very much, Warden Melon. Savannah, I'm, I guess it's so exciting, I love the energy and the passion you bring to this. I think one of the exciting things happening with the Great Reset and what we're talking about today is. Bringing different members of the community, different organizations together. Gray Highlands and and the Beaver Valley has seen some turbulence because of fear and concerns over what's going to happen, there's the unknown and the. The idea that the goal is going to be to come in and bulldoze and and tear up and and make significant changes, I think this. Helps to explain and show the goal isn't to change and disrupt and destroy, the goal is to. Identify opportunities, utilize those opportunities while being respectful to the area we're talking about. Everybody who's around the table knows and understands what the Beaver Valley is and the asset that it is for Gray County as well as for the municipalities that are directly impacted. It is great to see the significant amount of stakeholder engagement that took place. I appreciate Bannakin's team for taking the time and energy to have those stakeholder engagements to listen to the residents because. Without getting some positive buy-in from those stakeholder groups, we just should have ran into a brick wall. And so far and from what I've heard from talking to different individuals and residents. The, there is a positivity to what's happening and that's the best springboard we need to try and tackle this tourism initiatives. I have the wonderful part and job at the Gray Highlands to work very closely with Director Harris, who's a part of our economic development, or sure is our economic development director. And the excitement that she has for the buy-in to have the same buy-in from the staff in the Tana Blue Mountain. Shows that there's an opportunity here that's worth exploring, it's worth getting it right, I appreciate significantly the the concept of. Good tourism takes time, the the objective here isn't to just run ahead in the next one, two years. Try and throw a bunch of money at a problem and attract a bunch of new businesses, it's taking the time to get it right. I think those are things that I highlight within this plan as we move forward, continue to work with the stakeholders that are significantly involved. Of all stripes and sizes and and organizations that exist within the Beaver Valley as we try to manage. The opportunities that exist and have that growth that is coming here be directed and focused in the areas that it needs to happen. So I'm like yourselves Savannah, very excited about what's being presented, I'm excited to have the same conversation at my council table. And I look forward to the next few years as we try to enact some of the initiatives here and move forward with a positive tourism aspect in Gray Highlands and Gray County, thank you.
Thank you so much to you both for those comments. And I just wanted to make a couple of notes, which I think are really important and. You know, when we think about the alignment and the collaboration component of it and everyone being on the same page and having the same communications. One of the things that, you know, throughout the consultation process, people didn't realize kind of the level of detail that tourism staff here at the county and our municipalities get into. When dealing with parking issues and people on the side of the road and our emergency services not being able to get down the road because there is no proper space. Or photography getting picked up that shows a view from the bottom of the waterfall, but the only way to get to the bottom of the waterfall is to go past every sign and every fence and go down. And then likely make an emergency call, so we're so, so careful and we are always thinking about exactly what we're showing and what we're saying. And that's where that alignment piece becomes so important when you have so many stakeholders and so many groups. Who have messages trying to help everyone build that capacity and raise awareness of these are the things that we're dealing with and we're thinking about is really, really key. And you know, I can't say thanks enough to Bannakin and Camilo and the team for all of the time that they took on the engagement when we started the process. The very first conversation we had with them, this is going to be complex, there's going to be a whole lot of conversation here. Because there are so many partners and there are so many parties and this is so important to so many people. And I'm not sure they took us quite seriously until we started getting into the project and realizing just how complex it was going to be, but I think they did a really wonderful job of turning over every possible rock to be able to have those conversations and really bring back a thorough understanding. And when we started the draft strategy, destination management was a piece. And we had some very serious conversations about how we cannot have a role in that because we are not. The province, we are not the private landowners, we are not the individual volunteer groups, we don't own the land, how can we manage land that we don't own? So we took that out and really rethought and wrote that stakeholder alignment and collaboration component of it, so. There has been a lot that has gone into this and I really appreciate the comments that you've made and and realizing. You know, just how much work and detail goes into trying to build capacity, but protect our environment. But also have those demand drivers in well-planned, well-placed locations to be able to continue to bring people here and grow our economy and build that workforce, so. There is a lot that has gone into this strategy at this point.
Thank you Savannah, and tourists don't do silly things to get a picture, do they, I mean, that never happens. Councilor Roddy.
Thank you, Warden Melon, I I guess bit of, bit of yang, bit of yang. We've had a few strategy reports coming from consultants the last couple of years, but. What I really like about this one is that there's action plans and timelines and it's very detailed. And I I think it's a really, really good report, I think Beaver Valley is something that is such a beautiful asset. Especially two weeks ago, three weeks ago, you don't think the number of people that come up just to see the leaves. Four seasons, it is an asset that we do. Need to take advantage of and considering that it's in different municipalities, it's good to pull it together. That that's the yang, the yang of course is a couple of days ago, we had a Zoom meeting where we talked about incrementalism, I think it was Councilor Mackey that talked about. We approve these things, they're great ideas, but each time there's going to be a cost to it, that's going to keep adding up, so. You know, come back to John Kennedy nineteen sixty-one or whatever it was, ask not what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country. I I hope it doesn't all end up on the backs of the county, the expenses as we go forward, it's just. One more thing that keeps adding to the snow, uh snowball that that adds to our budget, but I really like the the strategic plan together, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Not seeing any, I'll cut. Councilor Eccles, I was that close.
Through you, Mr. Warden, and thank you for. Kind of that intro, Counselor Body. One of the first things that you said Savannah was that this wasn't going to cost us anything other than just a little bit of staff time. Last time I looked. It was very few staff here that were volunteering. So there's going to be a fair amount of staff time, as you said, put into this. That's going to be a cost because the amount of staff time that goes into this means that there's a lot of staff time that doesn't go into something else or. There's an additional staff that is going to be required. I bow. It's my own personal opinion, there's sometimes in a lot of organizations, there's too many staff as it is and. I'd just be very. Very strongly opposed to adding more staff at this point in time to any municipal organization. Because of what we heard on Tuesday. That was the first point, the second one is. That we, and it's the third point in the recommendation. That the formal memorandum of understanding that outlines partner commitment to achieving the goals. And achieving always achieving those goals comes with a cost. I'm wondering, do we even put that ahead of time? What is this going to cost us and one of the biggest things that was in that that Camilo. Introduced there a little while ago was, we need more transportation, we just heard from Mr. Hemstock, we need more transportation. Of getting people around, getting people up and down through the valley. That one scares scares me when it comes to budget on. What we're going to do to start moving people in and around. And I don't think there's enough money to maintain. The roads and the transportation system that Mr. Hoy is in control of right now without. Us putting a big factor onto it, of putting more buses on the roads and having to upgrade and improve and all of that. The cost of implementation of this is what scares me. And just as Mr. Mackey said and Mr. Body said, we're getting into these, two years down the road, we're so far into it, oh, we. We can't pull the plug now. We've got to keep funding it and the monster keeps eating. And maybe it's a 10% increase next year, maybe it's a 20% increase. Maybe some municipalities that are doing the budgets, it's a 30% increase. And that's not sustainable. I would like to get the financial part of it before I get the principle of, oh. Let's put our hands around this, it's great, the Blue Mountains is coming in and it's great, the Gray Highlands is coming in. But if they can't afford it, then the county can't afford it and we should have never got into it in the first place. I, I would like to see a lot more financial. Projections before I'm willing to start voting to head into an MOU of going at getting into this. Like I stated it here about six months ago, these are always great things, we start into them, yes. Lead Warden made a mention of it the other day, sometimes the province throws a little bit of money into it. But that money never increases and our costs increase and all of a sudden, there's an added million dollars. That Mary Lou has to put into a budget someplace. Two to three years down the road, how did we get there? This has got to be looked at further visioning on the budget before I'm willing to support the MOU. Thank you.
Savannah.
Thank you through you, Mr. Warden. The MOU at this point is purely our willingness to come to the table together and collectively work towards achieving a vision. Like we said, the second, sorry, the fourth recommendation, that's where if and when there's a financial commitment. That will be associated with the MOU that agrees to allow us to work together, that would come back to you at budget time annually. So that is the way that we would work it, we have no desire to put any kind of dollars into the MOU, it is strictly us saying we're in this together and we're at the same table, sharing the same voice. That's what the MOU is about and we can certainly bring the MOU back to this table if you'd like for it to be approved. Instead of having it just a staff level, that's quite okay too. Your question about transportation and other costs, we don't know what those other costs are going to be, that which is completely a fair point. But on the economic development side, we don't like doing it ourselves, we want private operators to come in and do this work, we want to attract investment and attract business to come in. Provide the transit, provide the experiences, we want to build those 5,400 businesses who are serving tourism, that's where we want that type of development to happen. So we don't want to be building accommodations or resorts or transit or any of that stuff. We want to be going after private sector to be able to do that, so we lay the groundwork to make sure that the policies are there and we've got a commitment that says. We're all supportive of this, this is the vision that we have for the area, this is what we're willing to support, this is what we know our residents and our visitors are looking for. And then be able to go to market with something like that. I hope maybe that helps a little bit, but yes, we, we don't want to be investing as the county or the municipalities or our TO7 in any kind of. Transportation or development itself.
Surprising you'd say that, but we're in transportation now and I haven't seen any private into the, private companies or anything coming forward. I look at the city of Bone Sound, it's the only one that has a transportation system under their own. Total jurisdiction. And I'm not certain that without the subsidies at the Bone Sound, the city is putting into it, you'll ever get any private sector into transportation. In a rural municipality where. As much as we're going, we haven't got the volume to get there yet anyways.
Go ahead Savannah.
Thank you through you, Mr. Warden, and your very rate on large scale, transportation is very different, but we're thinking very tourism focused. So I think of the Collingwood Beer Bus or I think of Georgian Trails e-bikes and organizations like that, that's the kind of transportation. That we're talking about, but we can certainly bring back the MOU, we can look at other, I mean, any work plan or any budget, anything that we do comes to you anyways. Every time that we're looking to be able to go down that path, so we're always happy to provide those types of. Updates and and plans first after your approval and interviewing.
Thank you Savannah, Councilor Nielsen.
Thank you very much, Warden, just kind of in response to Councilor Eccles' points, when I'm looking through the work plan, the four years plus, there's only. One item here that actually has potential for a cost they see. Being established and it's trying to host a tourism industry forum, that can be done through. You know, revenue recovery through ticket sales or something like that, the majority of this plan is trying to work towards economic development. As Savannah has mentioned and explained very clearly there, the. Economic development portion, the economy of tourism in Gray County, surrounding all nine municipalities that are involved here. Is a significant part of our healthy economy that exists, we have a victory because of the. Beautiful landscape that we have here because the unique nature of the trails and fields. As we work to develop the opportunities that exist, it is driving and encouraging businesses to come in to fill the need that happens. You have free spirit tours who takes travelers across the nine geographic municipalities because they will just service the Beaver Valley, they service. Meaford sections, they have tours that they have to businesses and locations around, those are the kind of partners we're going to try to develop. I don't see Gray Highlands Economic Development Team trying to build a tour bus, I don't see Gray County trying to get involved in. Manufacturing and establishing a tourism hub somewhere, it is laying the groundwork and sowing the seeds that businesses can come in. And then the county and the municipalities be rewarded by having an increase in tax base and increase in businesses and organizations that operate. That provide services that make living here in Gray County. A valid and enjoyable experience for not just the residents here, but those tourists that come. The goal here is to think long-term and the economic opportunities that exist and to try to develop those, I think that the. Financial costing will be limited because of the. Very realistic viewpoints that Councilor Eccles brings, but there is, you know, a limit to the number of dollars that we're going to spend, so their goal here is to encourage the businesses to do it for us.
Thank you, Dan, Councilor McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and just to summarize and and follow up with the Councilor Nielsen's comments. We do have a department here of tourism and economic development. I think that it was mentioned, one quarter of the employment is connected to tourism, you mentioned that. I think the town of the mountains would be a different place if it wasn't for tourists. And the asset value that comes out of that that supports the county, I think would be a different place, there wasn't for. Those that come to our community and spread sprinkle the money around, saying that, I think it's good that there's a strategy on coordination, I'll give you two examples. In Gray Highlands, there's Hogs Falls and there's Old Baldy and I think, you know, before you over promote something, you need parking. You need to work together on how you develop or how you, you know, I was at two thousand seventeen, the throttle. Was free, but it was a. You talk about over tourism, you talk about your natural environment, you talk about, it's, everybody went and it was a, you know, so I think part of your strategy is working together and. And I think this. So I think part of your strategy is working together and and I think this Council Nielsen said it's not necessarily all money to be spent, but it's working together and looking at. But I I think we would be a different place if we did not have people coming into our area and spending money because that does do us well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council Mattress Hops.
Thank you through you, the warden. I appreciate having a chance for a second input. But given that Town Blue Mountains are named along with Gray Highlands, I think it's important that that can take that these points are underscored. We do, we do, we we understand you have to invest money to make money and and that's exactly what economic development does is it looks at, in this case, 25% of our economic value and says, what can we do to best utilize it and and be as efficient as possible with it? There is, there is money savings for all three partners, two municipalities and the county to be able to work collaboratively together. There's no sense in reinventing wheels and three different sections and and crossing over each other's work areas. There's definitely value to that. But that said, as as my colleague, as as Counselor McQueen has said, we can't just and and the study identifies us, we can't just hurry up and encourage people to come here because we don't have the infrastructure to make sure that's a positive experience for both the local and the visitors so that they keep coming back. And we have a place for them and a place for their vehicles and a place for their bikes, et cetera. So in here, I I I do disagree with Counselor Nielsen that there's only one item that is looking like it's actually going to cost something. The forum definitely because there are all sorts of cost logistics in that. But to your benefit, to to my praise about this report, every action, yeah, there there is an action behind every strategy. But every action has a verb in it and somebody has to do that verb. And that's Counselor Echols' point is that that is a cost. Each and every one of these is going to cost us because it's going to take time out of our economic development staff to focus on this and perhaps not be able to get to something else. So before we can go back to the two member municipalities and ask what what are you willing to do as an MOU for a partnership? We need to hear what is the return on investment. Our taxes are coming in here to support the greater good, the work that comes here at Gray County. So in good conscience, before I can agree to any kind of MOU, even if it's just let's agree to work together. I need to hear what is the value that we, member municipalities will be receiving back? How are we doing this efficiency? How are we saving by investing staff time here on the county? That means there's going to be a positive benefit for these two member municipalities. And let's not forget that even though we're the ones who are named on being partners and financial partners. The whole point is to get, as I mentioned two weeks ago, when we were here talking about other resources. The whole point is to get those 3 million visitors in the door at Blue Mountain Resort and continue to welcome them right across the county so that they feel that they have a chance to explore every single gem in every single one of our municipalities. So we're all in this together. But I can't, I can't take this back to my council and say, so are we in on an MOU? Because there's not enough there yet of commitment from Gray County here.
Savannah, if you want to take a run at that.
Thank you through you, Mr. Warden. I'm wondering if for the MOU, because that was one of the key, actually the first recommendation that came out of all of this was to make sure that we're committed at the table together. Is that something that would make sense? For that to come back here to work as a partner group informally at this moment. But as a partner group to draft that MOU and then to bring it back to the council so that you can see what that looks like. And it can be a separate staff report that is approved that way. Would that be better? Like we can still work on drafting what that looks like. And then those conversations that you're or the questions that you're asking now can be part of those conversations and drafting that MOU.
I'm seeing some consensus around that suggestion. Okay. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Motion is it appears in the report is what has been moved in second. And that's what we're voting on. Sorry. Council Mattress Hops, go ahead.
Thank you for you, the warden. Granted that I'm going to ask the procedural question. Can we split the motion? So I would like to articulate that that I would like to split the motion to in between the second and third paragraph. So the first one, that it be received and that it be adopted as presented, but that the references to the MOU are done as a separate vote.
Okay, that has been moved. Is there a second or second or body? Any discussion on that particular amendment? Okay, I'll call the question to separate the vote. All those in favor? Posed if any? That is carried. Okay, so the first recommendation is who moved in seconded the original motion? Trying to remember who did that. Harleton and Pringle, are you okay with moving and seconding the first and second clause of the original recommendation? Okay, any questions on that motion? And that is to adopt number one and number two of the recommendation. Not seeing any, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Now, I need a mover and seconder for the second or the for the third and fourth clauses of the recommendation. Nielsen? Seconder? Counselor McQueen, discussion. Counselor Body.
There we go. Thank you, Warden Millen. Would it be appropriate for a motion to table that until we get report back? Is that kind of what we just discussed?
I think that would be appropriate. I think that's what Counselor Mattress Hops was looking for was to ensure that the MOU as negotiated comes back to this table. Is that what I understood? Counselor Mattress Hops?
Thank you, Warden. Yes, I would be prepared to move that we table.
The suggestion is to defer rather than table. It makes it a little better procedure. Very good. Seconder? Counselor Mackey, discussion. Counselor Nielsen.
Just for clarity for myself in terms of direction to staff. Are we not needing to give direction that we're going to go enter into an MOU in order for staff to develop that MOU? If we defer this question, then technically staff aren't being given the direction to engage. And that's just kind of a procedural question, given how we're working towards this. If we table and defer this, then staff haven't actually been given the direction to go and venture and spend the time. So just getting clarity on that, Warden.
So I think the understanding is that the request for the Member of Understanding to come back is inferred in the reference, we're referring it back to staff. The expectation is that they will bring then bring it back here once it has been negotiated for our approval, our review and approval. Is that what you understood, Counselor Mattress Hops?
Yes, thank you, Warden. Perhaps I should have been more clear in my motion that it would be my motion to defer until after budget. I I I don't, I don't want us to invest time on staff creating one side of an MOU that that one of the member municipalities may not be able to even entertain until we can see the dollars behind it. So to to preserve the work, the work and not spend more further time on this. I would, my motion is to defer until after budget deliberations at Gray County.
Okay, is the second or clear on that? Now I can't even remember who seconded that. Mackey, you're okay? Good. So everyone is clear? Counselor Nielsen?
Thank you, Warden Millen. To Counselor Microsoft, I'm just trying to understand your, so your your concern is about the potential of a budget cost to the MOU and the value to the county to bring it forward. And then you're going to defer the conversation to have until after budget, till after each individual, like our two municipalities have discussed our budgets and the counties discuss budget to then come back. There could potentially a cost then. And you're saying, well, now we've already done our budget, so now we're not going to discuss it because the budget's already been decided. I'm again confused at the timeline, what you're trying to do. If we approve and adopt the strategy and principle that we agree that this report that's been given, that the work that's been put into it is valid and makes sense. Let staff have the conversation to develop that MOU. Let that MOU come to this board and to our respective municipalities and decide if it's valid and if we want to move forward with it. That's a part where we can have that discussion of whether or not the value is there, whether or not we're going to get something out of it, whether it's worth investing through our budgets. If we defer this and wait until we're we're kicking a can down until a point where we can't answer the question anyways. The way you're trying to word it, in my eyes, is waiting until a point where we're not able to actually entertain it because we've already done the budget process. Let's have that discussion ahead of time as best as we can. If it is not supported, that is a fair and valid thing that can happen. But let's let staff have the conversation. Let's bring it to this body so we can be properly discussed and decided if the value is there as what is the concern being brought forward.
Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I know on our agenda for next week, we'll be addressing this or the presentation will be coming to your hands. Presumably it will be coming to Blue Mountains. So certainly it's it, what's here is is a three-way understanding. It says in this part, it says develop a formal memorandum of understanding. And the way you couldn't develop a draft memorandum of understanding to have the framework is is Counselor Nielsen's to give you something to sort of look at. The three parties may not even we get the presentation. Yeah, thank you. Yep, that's thanks. They just receive it. So it's it's a three side. So I table in it. Either tabling it or deferring it for deferring, I would prefer it's it's till maybe it has the opportunity to speak to the two lower tier municipalities and then come back with a report of how that went. Makes a lot more sense than just because it's Counselor Nielsen, how do you know what's going to reflect the budget? It may not reflect the budget very much. We don't know until we know. You don't know what you don't know. So I would say tabling it for or deferring it for a reason makes more sense to to get feedback from after the present is presented to the two or lower tier municipalities and then maybe a summary report comes back. So I'm not sure if the right word is tabling or deferring it until you know, so so that has that procedurally, but I think it needs to come back to see what kind of feedback are from the two over tiers.
Okay, the clerk has recommended that we defer it, but Counselor Mattress Hops, do you wish to clarify further?
Thank you through you, the warden, just because the question was directed at me through you. That's the whole reason why I was prepared to split the motion and why I voted in favor of adopting it. Because if it now comes to council in two weeks' time and we've adopted it, that means we have a document to circulate to the two municipalities. That means we have, we we know that there is something to be able to share. We are already in our budget, our pre-budget discussions. We're having our special meetings to make sure that we have time to deep dive deep into it. That is ahead. I can't answer for the Gray Highlands, but that is ahead of our schedule. Our budget deliberations will be three and a half to four days in January. So that would allow us to hear if there is buy-in here. If we get through our budget discussions and we decide for better or for worse, we have to pool our economic development dollars elsewhere and we can't pick up speed on on the action items that are in here. Then that's the message that we need to convey and share clearly with the the member municipalities. So that's the exact reason why I was prepared to support it, receive the report and adopt it. Because I do want this good work to be out there and be formally received by our two, all of our member municipalities. But in particular, the ones that have been named in here is to be able to allow us to bring that back. But there is, we we are not at a point to to go into a formal MOU when we don't know what we can, what kind of dollars we can put behind all of this action. So that was my rationale for supporting the first parts.
And you're continuing, you're still content with your motion to defer until after budget? Is that what, those are your words?
Yes, thank you, Warden. My motion, it does still stand to defer to make any decision about an MOU until after we have considered it in the budget process. So if my, the the clerk can advise me if my wording is not clear on that motion, but my intention is is that we carry on with our budget discussions. We make sure that this adopted or soon to be adopted report is is present in the budget asks that comes from the Economic Development Department, so we can look at it responsibly and comparatively and decide if we can move forward ourselves before we reach out and ask for the dollars from the the member municipalities. So if if you need clarification on the wording of that, that is the essence I am trying to convey.
Okay, so the clerk's telling me the wording is good. Counselor Body.
Thank you, Warden Millen. I I'm kind of with counsel, while I'm quite with Counselor Nielsen on this. I wonder if we still want to defer but get the report back so we know what to look at when we get to budget time. So we've got something to consider. We don't get the report back for budget, then we won't have anything to consider at budget. So I'm I'm thinking that it would be a deferral until the report comes back from staff. And then decisions on it could be made at or around budget. But putting it off until after budget before we get the report back even would, I think. We decide, yes, at that point, it could be kicking it down the road for another year. So I think we want to have the report back in the interim. So we at least have something to look at.
Very good. Savannah.
Thank you through you, Mr. Warden. It might help. We have our draft budget developed and we haven't put anything new in the budget for this, for next year, for 2024. The $10,000 that we had committed in 2023 to do this as part of the partnership is still in there. But nothing new has been added, nor do we have intent to add anything new for 2024. So right now, the budget sits at $10,000. That is no new addition to the levy because it was already in there from last year. And that's the dollars that we had anticipated. If we're able to use it, that's what we propose, to be able to at least move some of the work forward. And outside of that, it will be worked into staff priorities as part of work plan. But I don't know if that helps the conversation at all.
The clerk has a suggestion to extract the chair from the sticky wicket as it were. Now, clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And my suggestion is going to be similar to what Counselor Body has stated. That if if council is open to removing the words until after the budget deliberations occur, that will allow staff to bring the MOU back. It doesn't commit council to making a decision on the MOU at that time. But it just allows them to bring it forward. And then there's no time commitment being instilled that it happens after budget deliberation. So I think that would still meet everyone's intent and and the timing should be flexible in that regard.
So I'll go back to Counselor Mattress Hops because it is her motion.
Thank you through you, the chair. The problem that I have with this is that even with the removal of the the reference to after the budget is that it reads that that partners, Gray County Municipality of Gray Highlands, Town Blue Mountains, Regional Tourism Seven develop a form. The motion here is that it's going to those partners to co-develop this MOU. And and this is the part that that I cannot support until after there has been some budget commitment. So it the the we we can vote on Gray County itself developing a draft, as Counselor Body had said, a a potential MOU. But asking the partners to come back and work together on that with with no commitment on whether or not we're even going to be able to afford to go above and beyond $10,000 to get all of these wonderful things done, even the year ones. It's a cart before the horse. And that's why I need to hear more of the financial discussion. Because we're all, we're all preparing ourselves for where we're going to have to cut things and not go further or not develop. Perhaps it is going to be that we're going to have to shelf. This is good work. There's lots of good stuff in here, but moving forward, everything does have a price tag. And maybe this is where we're going to need to put it on hold. And I need to hear that conversation from my county colleagues before I can responsibly bring it back to engage as a partner to develop an MOU, which is the way the motion reads right now. And I need to hear that conversation from my county colleagues before I can responsibly bring it back to engage as a partner to develop an MOU, which is the way the motion reads right now. So.
Oh, I apologize. Sorry.
So I'm just confirming that that is my rationale behind putting the reference to the budget. If somebody wants to suggest an amendment to the motion in order to focus solely on a report, I'm open to it and not and actually engaging in a formal memorandum of understanding with partners, I'm I'm open to if somebody's got a better better step in between the two.
Kim.
We don't normally have these discussions through you, Mr. Warden, on the floor, but Savannah, I'm wondering if the commitment at this point then is to suggest that staff of the various organizations be supported to continue their discussions and that on a report on on the outcome of those deliberations and discussions is brought back to this council in and in say in the spring of of 2024. In that way, you know, people can continue to have discussions. You can continue to look at what's happening in the landscape there. We don't know if there may be other funding programs or other decisions taken by by the province or others. And, you know, to your point, both councils will all get through our budget deliberations and and see where where things lie and what priorities people are willing to commit to. But at least if we if we put a specific objective in with with having another report in the springtime, then at least that's kind of on the agenda and and that conversation can come back and and we can see where things are at that at that point in time. Is that would that be a a fair way forward?
I see a couple of hands online and I apologize. It just my attention was just drawn to that. Counselor Board, and you'll first, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you, very, very good discussion. I I think the problem is in paragraph of the new motion that the partners that develop a formal memorandum of understanding to Counsel Mattressaw's and Counsel Body's point. Maybe if we just ask for the amendment would be, we ask for a staff report to return to this council on what a draft MOU would look like and what the partner commitment would look like, including financial commitments. I think that would be more than fair. And then this council can discuss that both operationally, fiscally and the MOU. So I I don't think we can move forward without asking for what without to direct staff to develop that, what a draft memorandum would look like and what the partner commitment would look like and what the financial commitment would look like. So I'd be prepared to move an amendment to this motion to that effect.
Okay, is there a second here for that motion to amend? Counselor McQueen. Discussion. Call a question on the amendment. The clerk is clear on the amendment? Yes, she is. Counselor DeBreen, before we vote on the amendment. Sorry.
Thank you and good morning, Warden and in county council. I apologize for my delay. I I guess I would welcome an opportunity to see what we're voting on on the screen if that's possible. I'm what I was going to propose, I think, is very similar to what is on the floor now as the amendment to bring back, you know, continue to work on a draft memorandum of understanding and the financial implications of that for future consideration. If if I I would just like to see what I'm voting on if if I may. Thank you, Warden.
Fair point. Okay, apparently we need to pause for a moment to make that happen. Yeah, let's take a break for five minutes if everybody's agreeable to that. I mean, what the heck? It's almost lunchtime, but let's take a break for we'll reconvene in at 10 to 12. One minute warning. Okay, it is five to 12, four minutes to 12. We'll bring the meeting back to order. We're good to go, Rob. Thank you very much. So in in chatting further with the original mover of the original motion, the intent was to push off any decision on a MOU until next spring, essentially. So deferring it until after budget deliberations does that. So my question to you, Counselor Board, and you all. Are you willing to remove your amendment? Because essentially your amendment does the same thing.
Yeah, if 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 that's covered, Mr. Warden, yes, absolutely.
Yes, well, the Counselor Mattressaw is satisfied with that interpretation and you're okay with that, Savannah? Yes? Okay, so the motion to defer until after budget deliberations has been moved and seconded. You can see on the screen for everyone, I think, what we're voting on. It has been pointed out, yeah, it's a little difficult if you're on this side to see. So everybody's good? Counselor McQueen.
I maybe put my motion on there, not understanding the after budget. I was going to say till it's till they have time to bring back a report. That's what I thought we were doing. It was being deferred to to come back, but not until after budget deliberations. Well, again, it was this box defeats the whole purpose. How do we know we don't know? So I really don't. I wouldn't take my name off that.
So respectfully. It's gone. Counselor Board, and you're removed that amendment. So I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? That is carried. Okay. Now we're done that one before noon. Consent agenda. The consent agenda is there is, are there any counselors wishing to remove any for further discussion? Counselor Body.
I would like to discuss six A, which are the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee minutes.
Yeah. Thank you, sir. Any others? Someone care to move the remaining items? Counselor Mackey and Counselor McKay? Any discussion? All those in favor? That's carried. That was an easy one because no matter what order I put it in, I was right, eh? You guys do that more often with it, please. All right. On to items for direction and discussion. Adam clerk, just in regards to lunch or what are we thinking? It should be here and it is a hot lunch. Well, it's not there now, so we'll carry on for a few more minutes. So that brings us to item seven B. The agricultural specialist high skills major program. Would someone care to move that motion, please? Oh, Rob's waving at me. Just timeout for a second. Oh, counselor mattress office, are you moving that? Okay, secondaire, counselor Nielsen. Okay, we'll just pause for a minute until Rob. So what's going on? See, we should have never, you know, stopped for a few minutes.